Okay, we will call the October 9th meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission to order. Can we have the roll call, please?
Andre Spinelli.
Here.
Radhika Krishna.
Here.
Jim Winchester.
Here.
Scott Pulis.
Here.
Jeff Ron.
Here.
Brandi Eber.
Here.
Daniel George.
Here.
Greg Strike.
Here.
Jared Gardner is excused. You have a quorum. Thank you.
We have a request from staff to reorder the agenda to place item G1 before item F5A. Are there, is there a motion? Motion by Commissioner Winchester, seconded by Commissioner Ron. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, any objection? If no objection, the agenda's been reordered. Next item, any disclosures? Okay, anyone have anything they wish to disclose? Hearing none, disclosures are complete. We will move straight to the public hearing items. The procedures by which the public may speak to the commission at this meeting is: One, after staff presentation is completed on public hearing items, the chair will ask the public for public testimony on the issue. Two, persons who wish to testify will follow the time limits established in the commission rules of procedure. A, petitioners, including his or her representatives, will receive 10 minutes. Part of this time may be reserved for rebuttal. B, representative of groups, community councils, PTAs, et cetera, will receive 5 minutes. C, individuals, 3 minutes. When your testimony is complete, you may be asked questions by the commission. You may also testify only once on any issue unless questioned by the commission. For any party interested, any party of interest wishing to appeal shall first file with the planning director within seven days of the commission's decision made on the record. A written notice of intent to appeal in accordance with AMC 2103050A4A, commission recommendations to the Anchorage Assembly are not appealable. Okay, can we have the staff presentation for case 2023-0124?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This ordinance, ordinance 2023-92 was introduced by the Assembly and remanded to the Planning and Zoning Commission for consideration and recommendation. The ordinance amends AMC 2104-030B that requires a major site plan review for non-residential uses between 5,000 and 10,000 square feet in the B1A district. Recognizing that the B1A district is often neighborhood-serving and that not all uses create the same impacts on adjacent property, the ordinance proposes to give discretion to the planning director to waive the requirement for major site plan review. Approval of this ordinance, in some cases, will save commercial businesses the time and cost of a public hearing, but only when the planning director determines that there will be no negative impacts to surrounding property. In your packet, you'll find a map of all B1A-zoned property within the municipality of Anchorage. As you can see, there are very few properties in Anchorage that are zoned B1A. But with that, I would, the planning department recommends approval of this ordinance with one correction. The title block of the ordinance incorrectly cites the subsection 21 dot 040 dot 30B. The correct citation should be 2104 dot 030B. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Ron.
Thank you, through the chair. Mr. Whitfield, I have a question about the language that's being used in the proposed amendment in two specific areas. My first area of interest is reference to site design as being the driver for mitigation. And the second just follows that, the language around any potential adverse effects. So first part of the question, can you help me understand definitional criteria for site design? Are we talking about actual design, or could that also include operational controls, or engineering controls, or things of that sort? Second part is the any potential adverse effects. To me, that feels like a really high bar. And if you could help me understand why that specific language was chosen, and whether or not there's any potential to adjust that language, perhaps?
Yeah, through the chair, Mr. Ron, very good question. Site design is usually dimensional. It's usually with respect to designing a site, there may not, you may not be, there are creative ways that you can design a site that mitigate impacts to adjacent properties. That can be the location of your parking with relationship to that property, that can be the location of your building, that could be landscaping, that could be a whole host of choices in your design that maybe aren't necessarily code requirements. So that's what we mean by site design. With respect to adverse impacts, that is, it is broad. It is open to modification, if you believe it warrants it. But we, the entirety of this ordinance is to provide discretion, but at the same time mitigating any adverse impacts to residential property adjacent to the B1A district or adjacent to this development. So not putting that in there seems to me like we're kind of, well, we're not giving the planning director the ability to use that discretion and evaluate those potential impacts. But I'd be curious to know if you've got suggestions.
Commissioner Strike.
Thank you, and through the chair. This question is kind of open-ended, and it kind of parallels the prior commissioners' thoughts, I believe. And it's the types of uses that might take place on this site. And I don't have my cheat sheet for B1A, but what comes to mind in the community and what we've heard in testimonies in the past, everyone's afraid of homeless hotels and buildings and apartments and so forth being built and put into, put into the different areas. And some would call that, at least let's have a review on those types of activities, if that's even applicable here. Again, I don't have my cheat sheet for, I think it was B3 that we had changed once before.
Through the chair, Mr. Strike, great question. If a homeless and transit shelter is the concern, homeless and transit shelters are only permitted in two districts, the PLI and B3 districts. And they're, and they're only permitted by conditional use, which is a higher level of review that would come to the Planning and Zoning Commission. So that's really not on the table. There are a whole, a whole host of permitted uses within the B1A district. It's that, it's that area between 5,000 and 10,000 square feet that we're talking about here. So it would be a use that would be otherwise permitted, but because of the size of the use and the potential impacts has typically, or I should say, historically required a major site plan review. But not all uses are created equal. And as such, we believe that the planning director having discretion to evaluate that use and the potential for impacts so as to not require a major site plan review is appropriate.
And I, and I agree with that. And, but the, that level, that bar of adverse impact, and who determines that? The adverse impact to the director or to this body, and/or to the neighbor that's right next door where it's happening to them, we're all going to have three different definitions of adverse impact and what constitutes that. So I'm just trying to find some quantitative, qualitative range for the director to have some, I agree, the director should have some flexibility there. But how do we make sure, in this wrong term, how do we, how do we all get on the same page, so that his definition's ours? And I'm going to tell you, you can ask nine commissioners, we're going to have nine different opinions on that topic, anyway.
Through the chair, Mr. Strike, precisely the challenge that we're facing here. Obviously, adverse impacts is not defined by municipal code. And anyone that, that might be looking at, or I should say, answering the question as to what an adverse impact is, is probably going to have a different definition than the next guy. But it, the, the intent of the ordinance is to allow the planning director his professional discretion in evaluating those impacts.
Is that appealable, meaning?
Well, certainly. Absolutely.
And so, in this, in this memorandum, or in this agreement, giving them that, that option, I'm just looking that the public should have a path of ease in the event they need to, or want to appeal what the planning director has approved.
Through the chair, Mr. Strike, absolutely. The, the public has the right to appeal a planning, planning director's decision, always. So there, there is a path in Chapter 3 of Title 21 that gives the, the public the ability to, to appeal that decision.
Should, should that appealable path be identified in the, in this ordinance? And I guess when I, the reason I'm asking that is Joe Public many times isn't aware. I mean, they're not going out there and hiring an attorney and hiring a group unless it's coming through the community council. So that appeal process is not as knowledgeable to them. And now we're putting the onus and the cost on them, when in fact, we're trying to take the cost away from the developer, which I'm all, all for, I'm all in. I just want to make sure that the public has a pathway of lesser resistance, so to speak, than they had in the past.
Through the chair, Mr. Strike, I appreciate your concern there. In terms of organization, I don't think that it's appropriate to put language in the district-specific standards that refer to an appeal. There is an appeal section that identifies the appeal process for all entitlements, whether it's a conditional use, site plan review, director's decision, et cetera, that's outlined in Chapter 3 of Title 21. And that's, you know, quite honestly, where I think it should be.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner George.
Thank you. I won't beleaguer the point too much. I think that my colleagues who both spoke before me hit most of the points that I was going to hit, but it got me thinking a little bit. It's probably not as likely that a decision that is approved will be appealed by the public as so much as a decision that is denied by the director could be appealed. And then what are those measurable grounds, criteria, benchmarks? You know, is it ambiguous, or arbitrary and capricious, as they say in case law? How, you know, is, are we just trusting the director to make the judgment call? And if it's appealed one way or the other, how do you demonstrate that a criteria has been met? And I'll also leave with one other point. The memorandum mentions that the director must determine there will be no negative impacts to surrounding property. And the actual wording of the, the ordinance is, they must demonstrate that the site design mitigates any potential adverse impacts, or effects, excuse me. And mitigation simply means to make less harsh or less severe, not that there won't be impact. So I think it's important to bear those in mind when we're talking about impacts in a neighborhood from commercial uses.
Seeing no further questions, we will open the public testimony. Seeing no public here to testify, we will close the public hearing. Staff have any additional comments?
No additional comments, thank you.
What is the will of the body? Moved by Commissioner Strike, seconded by Commissioner Krishna. Commissioner Strike, would you like to speak to your motion? State your motion.
Thank you. I move in case 2023-0124 to recommend to the Anchorage Assembly approval of ordinance 2023-92, with the correction to the Anchorage Municipal Code subsection cited in the title block of the ordinance from 21 dot 040 dot 30B to 20 dot 04 dot 030B. And to speak to the motion would be, I would point out that there was no public testimony heard. I guess that's more of a finding. But it, I think it's, it's thought out, I think we've given, given some latitude to the director that's needed. And it's, this is, this is a course of action that's been spoken by this commission for at least nine years that I've been on. And it goes to the heart of putting some of the, not challenging issues, but putting the administrative-type issues back into the director's hands and the staff's hands to be able to process and prosecute these requirements, or these requests from developers more rapidly. Thank you.
Commissioner Ron.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Commissioner Strike, for putting forward the motion and seconding Commissioner Krishna. I would move to amend the motion on the floor by striking the word "any" from line I believe it's notated as line 19, in terms of page lining.
Okay, we have a motion up, seconded by Commissioner Strike. Commissioner Ron, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioner George, I appreciate your clarification around mitigation and its role, both in this language and in, in practice. And in so doing, made me realize that, you know, I don't think the intent here, at least as I'm interpreting it, is to have a result that really has no potential adverse effect, but it's one that speaks to the commissioners, opening up the commissioners' ability to evaluate, and for an applicant to work through the process in terms of designing mitigation. And that can be a back-and-forth process. I, I feel that the word "any" is a tripping hazard that really maybe doesn't need to be there. And when I spoke to the high bar earlier, it could be interpreted, perhaps, incorrectly in its, in its current presence. So for those reasons, I'd, I would like to strike it.
Commissioner Strike.
Thank you. And while I do agree with Commissioner Ron's take on that, my question to him might also be, does the word "any" in line 10 have the same implication? Or hold the same implication?
Commissioner Strike, I appreciate the question. I haven't reviewed that section. I've only focused on the proposed amendment at this time.
Okay. Well, I appreciate the amendment, and I would support it.
Seeing no one wishing to speak, we will vote on the motion. Motion passes. We are back to the main motion as amended. Is anyone else wishing to speak to the motion? Hearing none, seeing none, we will call for the vote. Before moving on to case 2023-0125, we had a request from staff that we should postpone this item, since there's no one from OMB here to speak to the CIP. Commissioner Ron.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to hear from staff, both the, you know, a little bit of context around the recommendation, I think I know why, but also the potential implications if we were to delay.
Thank you. This is Ryan Young with the Planning Department. In terms of implications, if we postpone, I can't say for certain. I do know that as part of the budgeting process, that the CIP go before the Planning and Zoning Commission, who will then issue a recommendation to the Assembly. In my discussions with OMB staff, I do believe that there is some slight leeway in this timeframe. So, given the fact that a presentation really should be given in front of Planning and Zoning Commission to fully grasp all of the items that are within this case before you, this evening, I do believe that Planning and Zoning Commission should hear that presentation before issuing any recommendation, and have the answer to ask questions as well. So for that reason, I would, I would recommend postponement. If we do have a meeting scheduled for this month still, we could postpone to that meeting. If not, it will have to go to the next available.
Commissioner Krishna has a question.
Maybe more of a comment. Yeah, I believe that it would have to move to the November 4th meeting, would be the next one available. I will say that this is one of those items that we see annually, where I really do feel like our recommendation comments are, you know, may or may not go into the ether. I, I for one would be comfortable, you know, with some basic questions and discussions here that enter the record, understanding that the Assembly will be having work sessions on this topic over the course of this month. And if we do hear it on November 4th, then they would likely only be received by the Assembly before the final public hearing that I believe the Assembly will be looking at, you know, maybe a few days after that meeting. I, I do feel like it's such an enormous book, that we, we mostly just kind of hear a summary of what's in it. We do get to ask questions, that is helpful, but I would say that I for one would be comfortable providing some written comments based on the commissioners', you know, thoughts here, so that we might participate earlier in the process, rather than later. That, that's just my opinion, though.
Before moving on, I have another question for Commissioner Strike. Does staff have a response to that?
Mr. Chair, I believe that the commission has been provided the materials, you know, you will have time to review them between now and November. Clarification on the hearing date in November, it would be November 6th, in case you were to postpone to that date. But if there were questions that you would like to be passed on to OMB staff, we could certainly do that.
Commissioner Strike.
Yes, thank you, and through the chair. I bring your attention to section I5, or introduction, page 5, with the preliminary calendar, which was identified. And this, it appears that this was, capital budget was not intended to present to us under the original plan until October 16th. So taking a look at the plan there, I don't know if this makes any difference in that determination, but it seems like it would support the delay.
Commissioner Ron is back in the queue, not making a motion.
Not making a motion. I want to better understand Commissioner Krishna's proposal, perhaps. Please, please clarify.
Commissioner Krishna.
Yes, I, I won't do a back-and-forth. I'll just say that, you know, in my five years in the commission, I don't believe that the commission has ever had a substantive amendment that has either swayed the Assembly or changed the, the course of the capital budget proceeding. So I don't believe that, I won't speak to whether we're able to even provide notice for a meeting next week. I, I don't personally think that's worth it. And I think that, I, I believe that we're able to provide questions through staff, to OMB staff, or provide a recommendation to the Assembly with some additional questions and comments that would be satisfactory for our level of involvement in this process.
Commissioner Strike.
Yes, thank you, and through the chair. I, I agree 100% with what the previous commissioner has identified in the years' experience on the commission of adding, saying these things substantive, and getting something back into the Assembly. My only query at this time is that I believe in the last election, we saw at least one, if not two, bond issues fail because of the misunderstanding, or the understanding, of how some of these bonds are approved and circumvent the, the tax cap issues. And therefore, the approval of some of these bonds, and this is what's an open question, the approval of some of these bonds also require, and come with it, the tacit approval for the support and maintenance of those items through the general budget, which is not subject to the tax cap. And I think this is a large segment of what interrupted, disrupted the previous election with the bond approvals. And so for that matter, that's, that's an area I would like clarity from, and how any of these relate into the tax cap, and therefore, because of their capital of these relate into the tax cap and therefore because of their capital budget and the bond, because they're bonded. Unless I'm, somebody has the answer to that here and can set me straight.
Through the chair, I do not.
Commissioner Strike, it sounds like you're in support of the motion that's on the screen in front of you, and all you would need to do is push the button. Motion to postpone to November 6th. Commissioner Strike, would you like to speak to your motion?
I think having the representatives for this budget being able to answer some of the questions regarding the bond levels and the question answers that come back on some of the items lend to the clarity and the intent and purposes of some of these capital expenditures as well. Now I am going and recalling that we've had situations where we have advocated different bonding criterias and segment and breaking up. And the school district, in fact, took those recommendations to heart after learning the hard way that large bond issues weren't passing. But it, I think this is an time for education that transpires or transcends across the board rather than looking to this commission to be a rubber stamp and putting forth anything to the Assembly because it looks good. So let, let's do it, and let's do it right.
Anyone else wishing to speak to the motion? Commissioner Ron.
Thank you for the prior commissioner's comments. More of a question, perhaps, going back to previous commissioner's comments about relaying inputs or requesting inputs to OMB. Do we need to do that now as findings to this motion or do it thereafter informally through requests? And I'm, I think I'm gathering that we can do it after we act on this, this motion.
Mr. Chair, Planning and Zoning Commission members, of course, have been provided the materials. You can feel free to read through those and then compile any questions you may have. If you do email those, just be mindful of the ex parte communication and making sure that all members of Planning and Zoning Commission are looped in on that email. And then those emails will go into the record as part of this case.
Commissioner Eber.
Perhaps I should have asked this question earlier, but can the Assembly move forward without our recommendation?
Through the chair, I believe they can. You know, the Planning and Zoning Commission issues a recommendation, that is the process, but I don't mean to demean this process in any way, but it is a recommendation. It's not a decision.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Hearing none, call for the vote.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Having gone through that, I maybe am misremembering, but wasn't the commission called here tonight for, for that item? Okay. Nothing further.
Moved and seconded. Any opposed? Hearing none, we are.